Okay, this is 5:15 on November 21st, 2023. I will call the meeting to order. Jane, you want to do roll call?
Rudolph?
Here.
Shabin?
Here.
Kroger?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Lindberg?
Here.
Thank you.
We've all been given the agenda. I don't think there were any additions, subtractions, or motions approved of the agenda.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Kroger, second by Peterson.
Roll call Rudolph?
Aye.
Shabin?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
Thank you.
Any conflicts, state them now or along the way. Hearing none. I will move on to the consent agenda. These are all under one motion with one roll call in the minutes of the November 7th, 2023's council meeting. The claims list 1302, the amount of $60,133.72. Expenditure and revenue reports for the month of October of 2023. And the sheriff's statistical report for October of 2023. Part of the lower claims list.
Yeah.
So that's good, bad, or whatever. It's nice to have not quite so many zeros there, I guess. Is your motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Rudolph, second by Shabin.
Roll call Rudolph?
Aye.
Shabin?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
Thank you.
Under other business, we have resolution number 2548 to set a public hearing for Tuesday, December 5th, 2023 at 5:15 PM. City Hall Council chambers for the application and Community Development Block Grant CBG program for financial assistance for the wastewater system improvement project. That's a lot of stuff. For one reason.
Did that very well, Mayor.
Anything you want to add to that, Jean?
Just, this relates back to the sewer lining project that we, a year ago, have allocated from our ARPA funding. And with these projects, they do have a long life cycle. Been working, Jane, been working with SWIPCO. And this ties back to even the community surveys this last year that were completed that make us eligible at a certain level for some CBVG, Community Development Block Grant funding. And we have also been continuously working through these last eight to 12 months with Beesker and Kim, our wastewater engineer. So the plans and specs are done. Construction permit's been applied for. So this is another necessary step towards the CBVG application for the first quarter, right, Jane?
Yes.
January?
Yes.
So to have this public hearing for this funding stream would allow us to accomplish more feet or more blocks of the sewer lining project to what we've already allocated. Unless you have questions, ask some background to it, and we'll probably state something similar at the public hearings, so.
Okay. Is your motion for resolution 2548?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Lindberg, second by Peterson.
Roll call Rudolph?
Aye.
Shabin?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
Thank you.
We should maybe go back through a couple of those, slow this down a little bit. We'll move right on to the city administrator report. What's that?
He might have two pages.
Don't give me.
Do have two pages sitting in front of me. So, but despite the short, or somewhat short, council agenda, there has been a lot of activity going on. First and foremost, want to highlight and start off with the topic that's been consuming, not consuming, but requiring a lot of attention for many agencies and other stakeholders. And it was announced at the County Board of Supervisors meeting this morning. An update regarding the, our EMS service. And I do have a statement here that I'll read, which was also provided by Chair Steve Kinkle this morning. And over the past few weeks, we've been working vigorously and very cooperatively with other stakeholders. There's some faces here in the room that have been working very closely on this. And this is regarding a more expeditions transition of our EMS and ambulance service. Tremendous support, fact of the best support in the state of Iowa relating to the EMS as a central service vote. So the voters, both within Harlan and throughout the county, made a resounding, loud and clear as to what the desired level of service is. And with that, I'll transition into the, and I'll simply read this. It was provided to the media soon after the Board of Supervisors meeting this morning. Yet want to provide that for all of you that may not have heard it, as well as those that may be listening to the rebroadcast here. The county, Shelby County is proud of the overwhelming support voters placed in making EMS an essential service in Shelby County. The goal of the countywide EMS system is to maintain and eventually increase the level of support to the volunteer units and provide the same critical care transport service currently provided by a private company, Medevac Ambulance Corp. On July 1st, 2021, the Shelby County Ambulance Commission signed a five-year contract with Medevac to provide Medevac, excuse me, to provide ambulance services to Shelby County. In just the past couple of weeks, Medevac has made several requests to increase funding due to their inability to sustain operations financially. The Ambulance Commission has continuously shown support of the financial challenges that have presented since 2021 and have responded accordingly with significant increases in funding. On November 10th, 2023, so just a few weeks ago, Medevac provided notice that without additional financial increases in funding, they will need to cease operations December 1st, 2023. The county is in negotiations with Medevac over the building and equipment. The two main ambulances or squads that are many times referred to are currently owned by Medevac, excuse me, currently owned by the commission and will be transitioned to a county service. Medevac staff and team members will be offered positions with the newly formed county-run ambulance service. The county's EMA Assistant Director will be the EMS Director, Assistant EMS Director in an interim position until a permanent director can be hired. That individual is here this evening, and that's Jordan Sanders. Most of you know him. And ending with a quote from Steve Kinkle, the Chair of the Board of Supervisors. "We know this is a priority, and with everyone's cooperation, we will make this work." We thank the voters for believing in the importance of EMS. And as Chairman Kinkle mentioned this morning, that the timing of this isn't as anticipated. And, you know, what's taken place up to this point, it is what it is. And the focus is to look, you know, present and move forward. And again, I know a number of individuals here, stakeholders at the hospital, Jenny LaFieber, Kristy Hanson, obviously Barry Jacobson on the commission. We've got other individuals here with Alex Londo, Roger Beeson, other stakeholders on the advisory group have been all working very cooperatively up to this point and will be, I mean, work very closely together over the next few weeks, as well as the next few months to first quarter, making this a smooth transition. Couple of other comments I would make is that the advisory council, which was that seven-person council that was established as a part of getting the vote passed, that seven-member council will continue. Their focus was in terms of researching, recommending, and educating towards getting a vote passed, and that was done very successfully. The Board of Supervisors will continue, or that advisory group will continue. And now that advisory group's focus will be in an advisory capacity in terms of planning, operations, oversight with Jordan as the interim, as well as making, you know, recommendations, suggestions back to the Board of Supervisors. And again, this is what was intended by July of '25. It's just that this has been put in an accelerated motion due to this announcement and change with Medevac in that situation. Any comments or questions that you might have? Again, this was announced with the County Board of Supervisors this morning. There will be, the Ambulance Commission will, which once again, for everyone's education, will consist of the city of Harlan, the county, and the hospital. The Ambulance Commission, as through a 2020, will remain intact through at least July of '25 with those funding commitments we had made. With some of the amendments that need to be made to that due to the switching from Medevac to the county service, a few of those changes will need to come back to you as a governing body. So we'll address those likely next week with a special meeting before council work session, which the other governing bodies will need to approve those as well. It's all in concert with this change in direction. That's a summary. And again, just can't thank everyone enough for the cooperation up to this point and I know the collaborative approach and the key focus being the goal, which is patient care and making this as seamless as possible to those that are served by this. But again, we'd welcome any comments or questions on that topic, or anything I've missed from the team that's here.
We're making the assumption that we have staff being in place, correct?
I'll provide a, just a real simple, a brief comment to that, that the Medevac employees certainly are aware and were met with this morning. And they, those employees also have an opportunity to come meet with the advisory group, as well as Jordan this morning. And I believe that looks quite promising. Is that accurate, Jordan? That most of that existing staff? And certainly have the opportunity to relieve some pressure on that staff as they're working lots of hours and have been for some time. So to build out to the model that's proposed, there's, will be positions available.
Thank you.
Good question. And I think, you know, as with a lot of this, it's fluid. Yet the response to that would be it's promising, and most of all, that staff is intending to continue care for the service. You know, comments or questions on that? There's certainly more to come. A few other updates then. Jane and I did have the opportunity last Thursday to attend the advanced budget workshop in West Des Moines. And it was highly attended by close to 80 other administrators and clerks with a lot of interest and attention due to the House File 718 from last year. We got some hands-on, not hands-on, but some real experience with the new tool or estimator tool called the CGFL, Consolidated General Fund Levy. We'll be discussing that more with you next Wednesday in our budget work session. And as we all know, and until the valuations come out by January 1st, that's one of the key linchpins or factors in determining what challenges are we, may or may not be faced with. Due to the revaluation year this last year, as we all know, assessed valuations went up. That was statewide, as well as here in Shelby County and Harlan. Despite those, you know, highly increased assessed valuations, just a re-education for folks, that doesn't automatically translate into taxable valuation and property taxes. One key component to that is that the rollback since 1979, this is the largest drop or adjustment in rollback since 1979, which is going to be an 8% drop in rollback from 54 and change to 46 and change. And in real simple terms, what that equates to is, on a residential property, if your assessed valuation went up 17, between 17 and 18%, excuse me, taxable valuation, nothing, and if nothing else changed, just through that rollback, property taxes wouldn't change for you. So until we see what the entire assessed valuation and taxable is for the city of Harlan, we have a much better idea of what that means for our next fiscal year. And we have this estimator tool that can make some assumptions for the next four years based upon assumption growth models. We, when I say we, Jane and I, and Ashley has been participating as well. We've met with almost all departments with budget view. And the target for that, because of the uncertainty with these changes and the kind of prudence and approach we should take, the target is to come in at a net zero-dollar increase outside of those contractual items such as wages, insurance, and utilities, which we don't have as much direct control over. So that is the target we had made, and to this point, we're staying pretty much in line with that. And the intent and hope is, is we don't need to come back and adjust that further. Again, the big question mark there is the, what those assessed valuations look like. Anything I've missed in that update, Jane? And again, with next Wednesday's budget work session, we'll highlight a few of these and a bit more.
Along with that, some of our levies that we're used to using are being rolled into this. So we'll lose like our vets auditorium levy, our library levy, different things like that, so.
And that's with this, the CGFL, that's the acronym for Consolidated General Fund Levy. They all get rolled into one. And by 2029, unless there's other legislative changes, everyone would be, will need to be at 810, 810 per thousand dollars of taxable valuation. We'll have quite a bit more education and discussion on that as we provide information next Wednesday. A few other updates. We have received the initial packet with HomeServe. That's for the service line warranty for sewer. And we started reviewing that draft packet. We're nearing that time of year that the holidays are happening. So I know HMU and street teams have most all the holiday lighting up on the poles and such. Cyclone Avenue, where there was funding, which we made some budget adjustment, or reallocated essentially with some funding for the Cyclone Avenue lights. So if you've noticed, those are the lights on Cyclone and a few lights up to the square on the poles. Those are also on, and those look real nice. And that's all in anticipation of Santa's going to arrive this weekend. I think Todd will have an update for us on that. Looking at a possible streets committee meeting here in the next few weeks. So street committee members, I'll be reaching out to you on that for a couple of items. I've been finishing up, working on a DNR Water Trails grant. Applied for this last year, and this would close the gap to fund our river access or canoeing kayaking boat ramp. And I've talked with that agency and have most of that application done by the December 5th deadline. So for example, Mayor, have an updated letter of support. And again, this would be from the preliminary plans and specifications we've had on that project for about a year and a half, two years with all of the planning and committee work and community work that has gone on for a couple of years. So that's exciting. Have an airport meeting in the morning. So look forward to seeing you bright and early tomorrow morning. Ashley and Sharon will be there. And I mention that because we anticipate we'll have in front of you at the next council meeting a few action items related to the airport commission tomorrow morning. And finally, the last two items I have. Like to welcome Stephen Simpson. Stephen joined us as our new operator in the streets department a week ago. And welcome to Stephen. And then Jack Goobles was within our street department. And Jack is our new code enforcement officer. And so congratulations to Jack in that new role. And we did meet Roger and Jack, Sheriff's Department, Chad was here, and some of the city hall staffs. We met collectively last week with the city attorney as well, just to ensure we were all on the same page with processes, procedures, as we stand up and put in play his new code enforcement function. So that's going well. And lastly, on a somber, sad note, I just want to provide sympathies and support as we lost a dear community member and former member of this council, Dave Peterson. And just in the past week, and Dave served many years on the school board, two terms on city council, many other community, not many places. You couldn't look around for quite a few decades, and Dave wasn't involved. And I don't mean to stir your thumb here, Mayor, but the, I think the term I heard the mayor share was, you think of Dave Peterson, you think of a gentleman, you know, what a gentleman, just a true gentleman. So sympathies to Emily's family, and just want to recognize that. That's all I have. So it took a lot more time for you all. But comments, questions that you might have for me?
It goes back to your EMS board. Thanks for all their efforts, because there's been a lot, a lot of unknown, or I shouldn't say hidden hours from that group, but just all their research and coordination and interaction as a group to be prepared. So it's appreciated.
Jordan, looks like you need to nap.
We're good.
We're good.
Anybody else have any comments or questions for Jean? Hearing none. Under my report, I don't really have anything. I'll just echo what Jean said about Dave. He was one of the folks that, I was the young guy that showed up when he was here. And he was here long enough to impact, you know, my thought processes about being a part of this group. I just remember one of the last meetings, he was here, you know, he'd been involved in so many things. And I grew up here in Des Moines. He was always around, but he just, maybe he was sitting here saying, you know, when he was maybe having a hard hearing, something, or it was, and he said, hey, you know, if you guys don't really want me here, I don't have to be here. I just thought, no. I said, you know what? You gave your time. You volunteered to be here. And he still was able to be an active person and be involved and think, you know, we needed that thinking, that knowledge, and that senior leadership to the day he decided he wanted to step away. But I do appreciate, he got to that point, he said, I want to step away. And, but you know, he gave back a lot to our community, just a good, good man. So, and other than that, I would just echo, I have not been involved in, and I am part of that ambulance commission that, there are lots of folks, but there are a few folks that have really put a lot of time into our community's well-being, that when we go to sleep tonight, that, you know, it's, we've got to this point, when we go to sleep, you know, the end of this month and the 1st of December, you know, we don't want things, we don't think we want things to skip a beat. And there's a group that, and volunteers, you know, Tim Plum, someone who comes to my mind, that he represents that group of volunteers in our community. There's just lots of good people that have stepped up and will continue. And there's a couple of guys sitting right there in the front row. He may look a little tired today, but I don't know if he's going to get a whole lot of rest the next weeks, months, whatever. But I do appreciate that the county, you know, is a part of this. The hospital is a big part of this, you know, and the city, and the gentleman sitting over here, Mr. Gettys is a big part of this, helping our community get to where we are today. So, I don't, other than that, I don't really have anything else. Oh, and I guess I'll ramble on here. We have some friends in town from South Dakota, had lived here a long time ago, came back. Their daughters were here. And all I kept hearing was they were outside Hallmark community, and they live in Sioux Falls, and they just were impressed with, you know, what they could do at downtown in Harlan at, I don't know what time it was, 11:00. I went to bed at 11:00 midnight, and they were still out there running around in the lights. And these are adult people, just loving our lights on the downtown in the square down there. And, you know, I don't know for a Hallmark, but we are a great community. So there's the little lights over there do, brighten a lot of little smiles. There are lots of children over there with families, moms and dads already taking pictures and taking that all in. And there's, there's no snow, which jinxes where it gets any snow here. All right. Shelby County Chamber of Commerce and Industry, Todd Beline, your update.
Good evening, everyone. Well, like Jean and Jade were alluding to, it is the holiday season. So this Saturday, after you've had your 12th or 13th serving of turkey, come on downtown, do a little bit of shopping, have a little bit of food in one of the restaurants, and then we'll have our holiday lighting ceremony that'll kick off at 5:00 on the downtown square. We'll have Santa down there for the kids. We'll have train rides, hopefully weather permitting. We'll have hot chocolate and cookies and all that going on. So make sure you come down to the square on Saturday. And that'll just kind of then start the process. The next time we'll get together with a little bit of help will be on the 7th, when he will be at the Shelby County Historical Museum with us. So that's the Santa in the cabin. So we have Santa located in one of the historical cabins, gets to come in and get their pictures taken. And the museum does a great job of putting on a lot of different activities for them to do there. And then on the night, he'll fly right back here, jump in the car with us, and we'll run him all throughout Shelby County on Santa Claus is coming to town. So we'll have a lot of, a lot of visits with Santa here over the next couple of weeks. A couple of other things. The National Hunter Society, once again, is going to do the Merrill Field Fence Wreath Display. So if you have a wreath you'd like to put up, please try to get it up, it'll be hung anytime between now and December 1st. And then the kids will go out and run the cords and stuff and get the fence lit up. And then when the season's over, they ask that we get them down by January 6th. And you can reach out to Jamie Anderson at the high school, just to let her know that you plan on putting one up and whether or not you need lights for it. Another cool thing happening on Thursday, the 30th, if you don't know the true history of the downtown area of Harlan, our expert will be back in town that night. They'll be at the library. And Alan Morris will be giving a presentation on the history of those buildings and some of the stories that he found when he was putting together the walking book. Should be really interesting. So the other thing I wanted to mention is Giving Tuesday is coming up next week, and we have a project here in Shelby County. We recently received a state Red Trails grant, actually a really good grant. There were 44 applications for that grant, and we were one of only seven that received any funding. But in addition to what we currently have in our account, we do need to raise additional dollars to meet the matching portion of this grant. The grant will add another mile and a half to the current trail that's down there. So you can make donations to the Shelby County Trails by either visiting the Ballpark to Ballpark Trail website, or you can bring them to the Shelby County Chamber of Commerce office. We not only accept monetary donations, we also accept donations of grain, if that's an easier way for somebody to do it. And Panama Transfers announced that anything that we receive between now and December 27th, up to $25,000, they'll match dollar for dollar. So if we can do a good job raising some donations here, we can make a quick influx of $50,000 to help wrap up this trail match. Other than that, just everybody have a very happy Thanksgiving, and I'm sure I'll see all your shining faces down on the square center. Any questions?
Thanks, Todd.
Thanks, Todd.
I know Joe had reached out. Their meeting, they moved theirs from Thursday to tonight, so they're probably still in his meeting. So I don't think we're going to get a report from him. Shelby County Sheriff's update. Officer Butler is here. Any questions, anything for him? Got your, you have anything for us, I guess, that you want to tell us?
The stats that you probably have, if you want me to read, might get me that sort of public news, otherwise you're out.
What's the definition of a contact? I forgot to ask.
Contact would be anything that we have, it might be where we get called to a residence or we make contact with somebody stopping into the office to ask questions or do any type of report. So just about anything that we would come into a contact with the general public. Right.
Wow.
That'd be separate from traffic stops and calls for service.
Sure. Thank you.
Do you have any questions for him as far as the numbers, the reports, things?
We had had an upcoming meet with Cody Yackles this afternoon as well. And if I say we, Jane and I and Ashley, and he had shared a disturbing example in which there was a call to a local business here and within a very short period of time that there were two squads there. And I'll summarize this in that there was great, great pleasure and appreciation that, wow, I didn't know, we would see responses quick because I didn't know there was sheriffs in town all the time, deputies in town all the time. And Cody was able to reassure that most certainly there's coverage in town all the time. And I share that because, I mean, obviously we know with reporting activity, I personally see the vehicles around town all the time and many of the staff live right here in town. But changes take time and, you know, a year from now and two years from now, it will be more and more identifiable, I believe. But I share that also for the press and appreciation for...
I know recently we had somebody try to call the police department lying like three times to report an accident, and they said, well, it just was out of service. So they called the sheriff personally and was like, who do I call? We called 5026 number. So some people still are trying to get the 515 number to go through, but that is just like you said, it takes time. And there's always 911.
That's the best number to use.
Right.
Chad, are there hours reported on, on your report or is that translated?
And I looked on our, we have a, on our time schedule, we keep our log of our hours per town. And the last it was updated was 1,060 for Harlan for the month of October. And it's 880 in the contracts or above that. But it's probably a lot higher than 1,060. That was just the most recent update that I saw on that one.
Thanks.
Yep.
Okay. Thanks, Jen. Any comments in public? Comments from up here? Kyle, is the wait?
I am.
He's moving.
I am awake.
He's down there.
What? Elvis is coming back to town this summer night.
What was the date, Kyle?
I think it's Saturday, December 9th at 8:00 PM.
Because that's Santa's going to be, he's going to compete with Santa that night, so...
I got my text from the fan club yesterday and I was pretty surprised.
The fan club.
VIP. Yeah. I don't have anything else. Thanks, everybody.
You got one more, Jane?
Yes, as Todd was commenting on the trails, that you'll all be hearing more about this, that there was a photo op today with the Dream Playground Committee and it was taken down at the slide thermometer that you see coming into the parking down by the Dream Playground. And it's just, you know, so many quality of life initiatives and projects that we have throughout this county and certainly in the city of Harlan and that we're blessed with not only having them, but also redeveloping them or creating them and the support that those generally garner and yield. So the excitement is, is the thermometer tape was placed today that is close to $400,000 of commitments or pledges towards the Dream Playground. The Dream Playground Committee is going to be meeting with the Park and Rec Committee that in the December meeting. I know there were some photos taken today, so on a larger scale basis, there'll be more announcements on that. Yet just can't be more thankful. Yep, there's work to do and that's no small number to sneeze at at this point. And it's more, just about halfway or a little more than halfway that, towards the target of the fundraising and donation side, which then really paves the way for the large grants, which we're talking with, we have the iOS and the CAT grants, and we have three or four of us researching and talking with those entities. And again, most of those don't come into play until last Monday. So hats off to, obviously with the lead donor that was approved with a quarter million dollar donation, but that plus everything else is getting us close to $400,000. So just wanted to share that and more to come. But a little bit of a chilly photo op today, but it was an exciting one.
A little breezy out there.
Yes, breezy.
Okay. That's it. Everybody have a good Thanksgiving?
Yes.
Save travel, save your travel. Meeting adjourned.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Thanks, Kyle.
See you, Kyle. Take care.
Take care, Kyle.